We'll call the meeting to order. We do have to kind of rock it through a few things and get started quickly today because we're going to have our common topic and hopefully end it at 6:35 so we can do a quick update on Act 46 and board member petitions. So I was just told by Bob that there is one adjustment to the agenda under 8.8. We will not be doing the approval of maintenance vehicle replacement. The bid was retracted. And is... 6.1.2 is not under discussion.
Yep.
Because that policy is still under review?
Correct.
Okay.
We're still working on it.
Okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda? No? Anyone in our audience wish to speak? I see two professional members of our audience and probably not citizens wishing to speak, so, okay. So we will go on to 5.0, which is reports to the board. And we'll start with the Colt report.
So I was hoping Bob might say a couple words about a new thing that we're starting with testing lead in our school's water. And just to kind of set it up, I'll say I received an email a couple weeks ago from a parent who said, "How do we know if our school's water is good to drink?" And initially, Bob reminded me... I'm gonna let you take it away.
Okay.
Because I turned it right over to him.
Elaine and I did a quick survey, probably concurrently with three other tests we were also doing at the same time, and found that the answer wasn't really consistent or timely. That some of the schools are hooked directly to a town system that some towns do test regularly and reveal results for all of the lead, but nobody was really doing consistent testing inside the school. And the general protocol is to both confirm your sources lead-free and then test on the other side of all the pipes, say at a water fountain, and make sure you're not running into problems inside. So we retain the services of our water testing experts who are currently engaged in Charlotte on a regular basis since they have a private supply system, and they're going to test the schools and issue a report that likely will say we're in good shape and there's not an issue. And Elaine and I will feel better answering the parent with that document in hand rather than...
Okay.
...our just good intentions.
Do you have an expected due date for that test?
I think we're going to finish everything and have the report in hand before mid-June.
Mid-June? Okay.
Yeah.
And the parent was very happy to hear that we're moving so quickly with following through with this.
Great.
How many of you had a chance to look at the professional development video montage? Good. You know, so we put that together really in a week. It was an idea that came out of, I think, the lead meeting that we'd had on the Monday. And remember, we were going on vacation on Friday. And Jessica Wilson, who is a tech integrationist in Heinsburg and then works half-time at the SU, just, it was really a great response from the principals and teachers also, who just volunteered to speak to it. So if you haven't seen it, I think it's a nice little encapsulating piece.
Okay. And our Act 46 study committee update, big news is, the agency or board...
The State Board of Education approved the proposal.
Yep.
Yeah? So?
So, the next step for that is, we are too early to... How do we say this? We can't put it on the ballot yet because we're too far in advance of June 7th, so we're going to do a meeting on May 3rd by teleconference to get that on the ballot. And every chair should have two people to call to make that... That email went out from Sandy today.
Right.
Chairs should be nodding their heads, going, "Yeah, I understand." And that'll put us on the ballot. And then after common topic, we'll talk about petitions and getting on the new school board. Anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple points. I believe in your packet, you have a handout, a copy of the handout that we used at the State Board of Education meeting. And one of the things that I would highlight is if you take a look at the backside of it, there's a few dates there that provide a little bit of chronology, and it's incomplete. I'd like to add some more pieces, like, for example, policy. We're not... I didn't have policy on there. When we started doing our shared policy, policy used to be in every individual district. It's now done. So that's one thing I'd like to add and check a couple dates, and Sandy caught me on one. But just a few pieces to highlight, I think that it's... One of the things that we should be really proud of are these carousel meetings that started in 2005. And that has made a big move forward for us to understand each other's cultures in the local schools, I think. And, you know, just a few other pieces, like providing for some differentiation in the superintendent's position by creating the position of a chief operations officer or chief operating officer, a position that Bob has held since 2003.
I think so.
And, you know, the director of technology position, so these, and director of curriculum, these positions have not existed not that long ago, if you think in terms of decades. But we, compared to where a lot of other supervisory unions are in the state, we've made a lot of progress towards moving towards shared services. So as you talk with your constituencies, it's something that you might consider taking a look at.
Cool. And thanks to you for all of your hard work, and Keith on governance, and Mark as well, who's not here, but really appreciate all the great work you did. It's awesome.
Good teamwork.
Yeah. So we'll move on to 6.0, discussion matters. 6.1, which is policy. And Cindy?
All of the policies, I'm pretty sure, that we've brought back for discussion, they have some pretty limited but some exciting changes for the administrators particularly. I will direct you to the weapons policy. Those of you who've had any knife come before you regardless of the blade will be happy to see we found a way, we think, to redefine what a dangerous weapon is beyond its length. So that is, the principals are really excited, and I imagine those of you who have done board hearings on this topic are also going to be happy to see this recommendation.
Yes, thank you.
So that, there's not a lot of substantive change beyond that. We've added, we've updated the student conduct and discipline to reflect the changes in the weapons policy. And then the last issue that comes up from time to time is around student attendance, but that might actually be in your approval pile, is in your approval pile. So I'll get through that if you guys have any questions on this. But these are the three up for discussion tonight.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is that venomous? So no pocket knife, no matter if the blade can be only one inch, and then it is considered a weapon? Is that correct?
I believe, and I need to, I'm reading it really quickly, but what we're trying to do is have it be more about the intent of the possession, as opposed to just simply possessing it.
Because it says, "If it is used..."
Yeah. Thank you, Elaine. I didn't get to read an answer.
Threatened to be used or possessed in a threatening manner. So if you carry, if a student has a pocket knife on a keychain...
They may still confiscate it for the day, but it won't trigger a board hearing simply from having possessed it. They're going to look at the intent.
Okay.
The one that plays out more often is in the K8s. You know, they whittled over the weekend with mom or dad or whatever, and it's still in their backpack from going out, and they find it, and because of their age, they show it to their friends, and now we've triggered a whole process.
Okay. So you're not going to confiscate my pocket knife?
Well, I'm not going to search you right now.
We will keep an eye on your intent.
Because every time I've been in one of those hearings, I always go home and measure my pocket knife.
Totally depends on your intent.
Yes. And that's what we're trying to get at, is somebody can have a one-inch blade or...
Want to talk about men's rights?
That are more, that is, that being used in a threatening manner that we would want to address and not exclude simply because of its length. But conversely, this, the steak knife that the well-intentioned parent sent in to cut up lunch will no longer trigger a hearing, as long as that's all the intent was.
I have one other question, because I remember our disciplinary hearing, and it was kind of like swordman, fake swordmanship things, you know, like Japanese kind of things, and because it was a weapon.
Yeah.
But really, the intent was not to be, it wasn't a dangerous weapon? It was...
It may fall under misconduct.
Okay.
And the principals may still address it, but it may not trigger a hearing anymore.
Okay.
But yeah, I guess if somebody brought on fencing things, we might have a different conversation.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Anything else on policy? No? Okay. So move to 6.2, calendar, last student day, last faculty day for 15, 16, which is this year.
So the recommendation is, we had a few snow days, and I think we had two at the K8s, and we had three at the high school. And so the recommendation is to end on Friday, which is 175 days. That is student days. The teachers would still work their full contract days, which would mean two additional days. We have already one day built in at the end of the year, so there'll be three days the next week for K8s, and four days the next week for 9/12. Our experience is that once kids are graduated, it's hard to get them back, and a lot of activities start that following week anyway. So what would happen with the faculty in the following week is professional development, and, you know, there's plenty to do. So this is an action for the local boards, but wanted to explain to everybody what our recommendation was.
So if you're seeking, maybe the other days that were weather related?
That's why they have four days instead of...
That would be for the faculty, not the students. You're still proposing the students.
Oh, right. Students would still end on Fri...
The 10th? And is that 175 days for them?
Yes. It has to be.
It is.
By law, we have...
That's what I wondered.
And four days initially.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions about that?
And you're really only waiving students coming back Monday or Tuesday. It's not that they would stay until... We're not waiving Thursday, Thursday of the next week.
Right. Thank you for that clarification.
All right. So move on to action matters. And I think the way we normally do these personnel items is, we ask if anybody has any issues.
Right.
And then we can approve them and block. Okay. So we'll open up questions on 7-1 to...
7.1.1 to 7.1.8.
7.1.8. So I guess proper way, so could I get a motion to approve these eight personnel actions?
Second.
Second by Kathy, moved by Joan. Discussion? Anything? Any issues from staff, central staff on any of these? Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I thought that the resumes, the background, the folks was really strong, and I didn't know if, what your experience was with this round of hires, how our pool looked and what we attract, just at this time of year, for the sense of that.
Yeah. From a special ed perspective, we haven't had this number of very high-quality candidates in a long time. And we, we had, at the moment of this, we had 50 applicants even now, because we still have a couple of positions. We have a pool of 65. Usually, our candidate pool is a lot smaller, and we're really excited about the candidates that we're moving forward, so.
And I was impressed, I mean, this is my personal belief and desire, but I'm interested looking at CSSU.
Yes.
And it was, just, it really gelled to me, and I thought, then I imagine, am I making this up, or do we have a richer pool, or so?
We had several candidates in the court, some, many of which are the ones you're approving, who the first thing out of the gate at the interview was how excited they were to be a part of this organization because of the things that we're addressing, which is both great for you to hear, but also what an interview committee wants to hear, is that they are aligned with where we're going, so.
Not a school, a system.
A system, exactly.
I think we also benefited from, we were ready as soon as Town Meeting Day happened to go forward with our postings. And by posting all of our special ed positions in one posting, instead of them getting distracted by which school they were applying to, had them all in one pool, and I think that benefited us as well.
Yep.
Or also from Vermont, or did you get any...
We had a number of external, out-of-state applicants, interviewed a couple. I think these folks are all Vermonters, but we did have some outside of Vermont folks.
Just a follow-up to Cindy's question. So everybody applied to a position that was posted, not by school?
Correct.
Right? For the most part. How did, how was it determined where people would go?
Yep. So we do our initial, this first round, which is a CSSU round, looks at all the openings we have. What do those openings require in terms of skill set? Draft the questions so that they cover all of those, so that we have a sense of where the candidates might be a good fit. After that round, the committee looks at, and we found this in this case, are there a number of people that we want in our system somewhere regardless? That triggers a second conversation with the candidate to say, "If you had the opportunity to inform us about where you wanted to be, what would you say?" So that helps with the decision-making, whether it's a grade level they're interested in. But we had great candidates who said, "We just want to be in CSSU, and wherever you think we would be a good fit," which is great. So that's how that conversation happens. The exception to that would be, obviously, if we had a high, licensure is an issue, so when we're hiring for the high school, you know, that's a certain set of candidates, so. We also, during this process, had folks internally, for the first time, within CSSU, say, "Hey, I heard that there's a vacancy over here. Can you tell me more about that?"
Yeah.
Which is another opportunity that we haven't had the chance to do before, so.
Thanks. Thank you.
So I do have a question with respect to 7-1.7, which is, I believe the leave of absence request, and the person is going to another position in Charlotte. And the leave of absence is because the Charlotte position is short-term? Is that why?
Yeah, go for it.
It's been our practice, if a teacher is going to take an administrator position within the SU, we let them take a year's leave of absence, sometimes two, while they adjust to being an administrator, because we don't want to lose them in the event that either the position's cut or they decide administration isn't for them.
Okay. Wow. That's great.
But only internal. We're not that nice if they leave us.
Development.
Yeah, wow. That's sad. I thought you just threw them in and made them swim, but...
[laughing]
Any other questions? Okay. So I guess with respect to 7-1.1 to 7-1.8, hearing no more issues, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. So move on to 7-2, which is the adoption of the 16-17 CSSU calendar. Could I get a motion to adopt the calendar as in our packets?
So much.
Moved by Mark.
Second.
Second by Kevin. And discussion?
I have a question about the early release late starts. Not all the Tuesdays and Wednesdays are Mark's early release late starts. There are two in September, two in December, and two in June that are not. Was that intentional? Could you just talk a little bit more about that, because it could be confusing.
Yeah, we wanted the math to add up.
Okay.
Because initially, back in January, maybe, when we had the first conversation, what we heard was, "We don't want to lose any instructional time." So that was the notion that, whereas other districts that have done this have not added student days, we're proposing that we add four student days.
Right.
Four student days, 28 hours. Jeff and I sat down and added it up, and so that's why. We have had some internal conversations, and I'd be interested in your thinking about this, that is it easier for people if it's just every Tuesday and Wednesday? Then you don't even have to think. If it's Tuesday morning, or if it's Wednesday morning, CBU's coming in late, if it's Tuesday afternoon, K8s are going home early. But we did it because there was some conversation around, we want to make sure that we don't lose any instructional time.
Okay.
Yes, Kathy?
I think it would be easier if it were consistent.
Yeah.
Kind of because of what's...
Okay.
Is it probably like the full days before we have to remember, is this a normal Tuesday or an early release Tuesday, like a...
So could I...
If we're still concerned about losing hours, maybe all at the end of the year.
Yeah, like a half-day at the end or something.
Hmm.
So you have, you know, a three-hour, half-day.
Could I just get a sense, without presuming what the vote is going to be on this item? Could I just get a sense, kind of like thumbs up if you think it's a good idea to, like, schedule all of the weeks, and then if we want to make it up at the end, we would do it all at the end?
What do you mean? I don't, I don't know.
Well, I just, you know, you guys are going to take a vote on this, and you haven't done that yet. But I want to make sure that when you take the vote, the vote is on a calendar that we understand, because you're taking a vote. That vote is just to get everybody a sense of where you are, because it's going to the locals next.
Right.
I want to make sure that every local votes on exactly the same thing.
I don't know what I'm voting on, I guess.
So I'm asking if...
The straw vote.
The straw vote would be to have us include every single Tuesday morning, every single Tuesday afternoon, and every single Wednesday morning for CBU. So Tuesday afternoon, one hour early release for K8s, and every Wednesday morning, one hour late start for CBU throughout the year. If we wanted to have some conversation later about whether or not we want to make that up at the end of the year, so that we do have the balance that I talked about in terms of instructional time, that's easy to do later. What's not easy to do is if somebody, you know, Williston votes, "Yes, we want to do this, and we're, we want to make sure that we have all of the Tuesdays," and Heinsberg votes, "Yeah, we want to vote it as presented in the packet."
All right.
That would be very confusing.
If we could just hold off on that?
Okay.
I understand where you're going, but I don't want to jump to that right away. I think we could have a little discussion about it. Because I think in our, in our comments that we've received from the town, from residents, it's always been, "It's inconvenient for me to do it." You know, people have really commented, they're like, "Oh, it's inconvenient for me to do this." So now we've put these days back in, and then we're saying, "Well, we'll take them back up." So, and I think also, like, some of these short days are on, I'm looking at your screen here.
Short weeks.
These short weeks, they're on short weeks, so you're already missing...
That is how we pick them.
Yeah. So that is the, that is the key. It's not just like, "Oh, let's put one in October and put one here." It's, it's to get consistent, it's to get some more rhythm into weeks that are already broken up.
That was by design.
Yeah. And I personally feel that that's, that makes sense to me. Going to school for four full days instead of three and a half, but I can be overruled if everybody has anything else to say.
Not every short week is like that, though? So if the lack of consistency in every week is using the parents? Because you have two short weeks in January, you have a short week in May, when you have Memorial Day.
Yep.
So you have, like, half your short weeks that are, they have an early release late start and half that don't, so...
Talking about four days, right?
And also, I'm wondering how if you have some Tuesdays, so some early release days, some late start days, what about extracurriculars? If parents are enrolling their kids and, you know, a program, and the program bumps the time back, but then you have school go later, how would that impact any programs that are adjusted to accommodate the early release? Or, for instance, you do a skiing program.
Right.
I'm a little ignorant on the skiing program. I'm not sure if it starts in December. Probably not, because it's always had snow.
I can see that the inconsistency would, the way we left that, we left that with each of the individual schools. So we said, the after-school part, how they handle that, it's not uniform across the SU. Principals have shared with each other, so they all know how they're doing it, and that could morph, because there might be some great ideas that come out of this, or some things that work out that make sense for everybody. But coming out of the gate, we allow each of the principals to work together to figure out what they would, how they would handle the extracurricular activities that occur at school. But I understand what you're saying. It would be, I think it would be more confusing if some Tuesdays the kids are getting out at 2:00, and other Tuesdays they're getting out at 3:00, and now working with the co-curricular enrichment activities that are going on after school.
So I think what we could do here is, oh, go ahead, Joan.
No. I have a...
Oh, okay.
I find that it is difficult enough for parents to remember days that the kids are off from school, or they are going back to school or whatever, because everybody's schedules are so, so busy and so packed, that if it is not on a consistent basis, you're going to have kids staying at school, or getting out, somebody coming to pick them up an hour early when they're supposed to be there. I think it's just going to happen, because it's not always the parents. It may be babysitters that need to be aware of that schedule, too. I, it causes, I think it will cause difficulty.
I might have missed this earlier. Susan knows from Charlotte. So when I was talking, asked this question to the local board last month, the answer to my question, which was, "Does it have to be on a Tuesday?", is because of the faculty meetings that follow. And Tuesday just seems like the wrong day of the week for me, to have an early release, especially if you have the Monday off. I'm sure you guys thought about this, talked about it, but if there's any chance it could be a Thursday or even a Wednesday...
We did discuss that. I put, that was one of the first things on the table for discussion at our lead meetings, the individual meetings I have with each of the principal groups. In the end, we kept it where it was, but it's not because we didn't discuss it. And I think that one of the main reasons that people feel, it's not like in another year, we couldn't move it to another day, but there's been a lot of effort this year for next year's co-curricular sports schedule, to avoid Tuesdays, because that's faculty meeting day. And some schools have already worked out their schedules so that they're not having any games on those days. And now to switch it on them at this point just adds a whole other level, and it gets beyond us, because the games aren't just amongst our schools, they're between Burlington and Charlotte, or, you know, so it's not, we really did have a good conversation about it, kind of went back and forth, and then went, "It's really pulling the rug out from under the people who we've been pushing hard to free up that time." So we don't disagree.
But that conversation was done, it wasn't done framing this calendar. It was done because...
Yeah.
Teacher, you know, staff meetings are done every Tuesday. It's not because they started to change because of early release.
Right.
It was done before that conversation even started.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Yep.
So...
So is our concern, we, I think there's, what I'm hearing is there's agreement about wanting to give the professional development time that's needed in restructuring the calendar. And the question is whether or not our individual boards would advocate and/or approve a calendar where there's consistency to minimize confusion for parents. Is that, is that where we are?
I hope that after this conversation here, whatever you vote on, is what will get voted on at each of the boards, that we're not going to have a hodgepodge. I think that would be totally chaotic.
Yeah.
So it needs to be the same calendar for everybody. So the primary concern is the consistency. Is that correct?
Right.
Well, so there's two concerns, though, really, right? It's the consistency, but it's, and I applaud the administration for thinking ahead and talking about the hours, what is it, three hours that we're gonna, was going to be the difference, and trying to fix that. So if you're striving for consistency and those hours, I would suggest the way to do that may be to start the early release days in October, and just let September go, and then say, from October forward, early release on Tuesdays every day.
Although it may be the most productive for faculty to have the early...
You have five professional days leading into the school year.
I hope I'm speaking for administrators here. I think it would be better to have June be the days, or the end of May and June, because I think September really is a productive month, and I think for families, better to start off the year.
Yeah, I think that's probably...
So I think...
So yes, those are clustered together.
Same concept.
Exactly.
And you also have, so then you have to go one week in May, but last week in May has Memorial Day, so two of those weeks would be short weeks anyways.
Right.
You just have one that's full. I could see that being consistent enough for parents to say, okay, now we're switching at this point and it's consistent going forward.
Parents smarter than me.
So, so how would we do this? Would we amend the motion and would we make an amendment to the motion?
We would charge the administration with reading the calendar to include consistent days from September to beginning of May.
No, not the beginning of May, through the 23rd and 24th because it's not last weekend.
Can you give us just a really brief where, what the after school option looks like around?
This is, so.
This is Erin, she wasn't at our last meeting.
Yeah, so we did send out a thing to all families from each of the schools. So it's not the same everywhere. But basically it is a combination of the Imagine program, the Imagine After School, taking on some activities, taking on more students. It, the, in some schools, the Four Winds program coming in and doing things. Some other groups partnering with the school to offer activities.
In every school is there, if a student isn't normally in an after school program, it's an option for them to cover.
I think that that is true, although it's going to be a little more complicated in some schools than others. But the answer is yes, we're trying to work that out. So for example, Williston. It could be that we have more space at Williston Central than it, than we do at Allenbrook. Although I think we're trying to figure that out even. But, you know, so it might be that kids get bused to Williston Central first. I don't, I don't know that that's what's going to happen, but I know those are the kinds of things people are trying to figure out.
So just, I, just what Mark's idea flipped around. We're saying early release, September to middle of May, and then kids will have full day Tuesdays in late May and June.
And Wednesdays, high school also?
Just want to make sure everybody knows that's what we just said.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, can you clarify the, the high school also, what you meant by that?
Well, I, I just meant, are you also saying that at the high school level, we would have late starts from September until?
Let's say end of May, just in case.
But it would be the same, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Cause if you have snow days, you might want that time at May.
But that doesn't eliminate some of the other late starts that.
For example, that high schools had this year or early release, right? Those all are going to continue?
No, this is a, this would, we would.
But those aren't professional development. Those are all tied to aspect testing or other kinds of things, so.
Yeah, that wouldn't be my bad.
No. So those are going to continue, all those other days that the kids have half days or whatever.
The ones that are specific to the testing most likely. And I think there might be, you know, presentations that have to take place on some point.
I do have a concern about that kind of high school. I think what you're saying makes a lot of sense for the K eight and the June thing. Culturally, high school students who are used to an early delay at start suddenly coming to school earlier at the end of the school year, I think could be really challenging.
On the one day, because they've been coming in earlier every other day though. But I hear what you're saying, it's true. I mean, we probably should have a late start for high school kids.
Every day.
Every day.
If you really look at how it works and what research says, we'll talk about that next.
Are the sort of bus logistics able to compensate rides for the fact that some kids who might have rides early in the morning, four days a week, are out of luck on a late day and need to find a bus?
Children in our schools can get on the bus anytime they want, so yes.
But I mean, if, if a bus doesn't normally make that stop or they know that they have to add that stop to their route on the off day?
I don't know as we modify routes based on who we think is going to ride, we, we go the route.
And if a kid is standing out there, they get picked up.
The child has never ridden the bus, he may want to remind somebody that he's planning to ride the bus, but, but the routes don't change.
But was the question, if there's a late start, can a kid still get on the bus? I mean, the bus route still is consistent, it's just a different time. Is that your question?
Okay, cause I just know if they're not used to stop where.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah, we should be able to figure that out.
It'll only happen once and then they'll fix it.
We, we get quick feed that quick.
Yeah, we'll just give them Bob's number and they can call him up. So.
So this is for high school.
Yeah.
This is the late start piece.
One other thing that was talked about last time was any budget impact of this? Because, you know.
Yes.
We did have that number.
So the number for the four days is just shy of $20,000 for all of it. And the number for running an ex, the extra routes, I guess, on those days is about $15,000.
That's across all the schools?
All the schools, right. And just to be very honest, CBU bears most of the burden of that.
So can I ask the $35,000 question then?
Yeah.
Given extra $35,000 and the grief that each one of us has taken in the last several weeks, is it worth it to do this professional development?
Yes, absolutely. If you ask us and if you ask every single principal, and now it turns out if you ask the teachers, what you'll vote is still your, you know, that you have to decide, you know, what, what you think is best for kids. But the, the professionals in the system absolutely believe that this is the best way to spend $35,000 to get better results with kids. I, I think that, I, I don't even have to say, I don't know if I speak for everybody. I know for sure I'm speaking for everybody when I say that.
And for some context, it's on the $70 million budget, right?
Right.
Yeah, but 35, 35,000's half a teacher. But my feeling is, is, as a district, we're, we're trying to hold our instructors accountable to the highest standards and we want the highest performance from these instructors. And I think it's our duty to provide them the best training possible to deliver that content to our students. So I trust our administrators, if they say this is the strongest way to do it and the best way to do it, we're going to show our staff and our parents good faith to deliver this in the best way. And I can't, thinking about it myself, I can't agree more that one day in September, full day, one, full day in June, that's no way to deliver development. You gotta have consistency over time, repetition, you know, it's like the, you know, basketball player doesn't practice. He practices every day to get better. And I think we are required to do that for our teachers. That's me. Okay.
Studio days that I think were mentioned in maybe the cold report somewhere? Those are outside the scope of this? Studio days for, I think it was science that was talked about? Any of those going forward, those are not? So there will still be lots of substitutes in when studio days happen and?
Yeah, in the studios model, there will still be substitutes. Although this is an opportunity now to take that power and maybe have some of the debrief happening during that time, which would then reduce the impact on needing subs.
I know for the teachers, that's one of the things they talked about. I met with a group of teachers just before the vacation to talk about how this was all going to work. And one of the things they said, they just really looked forward to getting pulled out of the classroom less and having the time that they have for planning, actually there is for planning. I think that's one of the things that's really encouraging to them.
Video talked about that, but I didn't, I didn't interpret studio days to be a part of that necessarily.
Well, how we're doing things now is making it all work. Which includes like sliding things into like the 15 minutes we can find here and the half day we can find there. And, you know, smattered days along the continuum to do real professional development. But, you know, as somebody already has pointed out, in between, life happens, your work happens, the kids are there. And whatever you learned last Tuesday is so far from in your mind because the present is right here. And doing this every week ensures that it doesn't go away. It's a continuous, you know, learning, so.
I just want to make another comment about the day of the week. So now that I know that sports are driving the decision, that makes me even feel more strongly about the two weeks. That I do think that if we change the calendar, then we're stuck with Tuesday going forward. And I think for people, you know, that are changing their work schedules or whatever to get home for that day, I just feel like for the kids, I don't think Tuesday is the right day to have an early release. I don't. I think faculty meetings could happen Wednesday or Thursday or ideally Friday.
Well, faculty meetings won't happen on Friday, but they could happen any other day because they're contractually, as long as we let people know. But we need to, to know what we can do and what we can't do. And it's, it's not likely or even possible that we'll do it Friday. But Wednesday, Thursday is a possibility.
I just think the momentum of the week, you know, you have Monday and then Tuesday and funky release and then Wednesday, Thursday for K, you know, pre-K or not pre-K, but K-12, K-E, I think.
Sorry, Lane, why, why is Friday out of the question?
Contractually, teachers are not going to stay Friday afternoon past three o'clock.
So that's a little ways away, but, no. I think just for, we find it so much easier to inconvenience families and students and we find it impossible to get a similar flexibility from staff. I think that's, it does not help community relations.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, but there's also the reality that the Friday afternoon isn't the best time to be working with people on, you know, whatever it is that. I, I hear you. Joan?
For me, any time I've been in, in a work situation, in a, in a volunteer board and anything, the momentum to have meetings and constructive conversations, to do it at the beginning of the week gives the week to work. We always had our family kind of time, Sunday, Monday, to, to design the week. And so that's just another picture from another perspective. Thursday, anyway, that, that's just another picture.
Yes, good.
I would agree with the, the Friday afternoon thing, having worked for many, many years, Friday afternoon, I was usually fried and my mind was not as sharp and ready to learn something new and be into something new and have the energy to do that. The other thing is, I think I heard you say that the Tuesday was not set in stone for all years going forward, that it was specifically for this year, at least that we planned that because of sports schedules that were already set up with other towns. Is that correct?
Right.
Based, based on a staff meeting that happens every Tuesday where staff that may be coaching teams.
Right.
And staffing those teams and things like that.
Right.
So those folks can go to their Tuesday afternoon staff meeting and get that professional development. And then that grew out the broader sports schedule.
Right, right.
That's an example, I mean, many other activities are affected as well.
I'm not advocating any position here, I'm just pointing out that if we were to move the K eight day off of Tuesday, we should absolutely not do it on Wednesday because one of the comments I, that I, the, the most frequent comment I've gotten is the inconsistency between the K eight and the nine 12. And for parents that have a kid in each, it's difficult. I can't imagine how crazy they would go if one kid had to show up at school late and another kid had to leave school early on Wednesday.
Yep. So I'd like to move forward within, with a, an action where, an amendment where we would say we charge the. Yep.
The 11th is not listed as one of the early release days. It's a parent teacher conference day for nine through 12, but it's a normal day for K through eight. So for early releases, it should be under K through eight, right? Am I reading this correctly?
The 11th is not a school day.
For K through eight as well?
Pardon?
Is the 11th not a school day for K through eight or just nine through 12?
For anybody. I think it is Yom Kippur.
No, Yom Kippur is the 21st according to the, and Yom Kippur, it's written down here as 10/2 instead of 10/21 on the text on here, but I think the 11th is a school day for K through eight, if I'm reading this correctly, is that right? Cause it says 10/11 is a parent teacher conference day for nine through 12, no students.
Yom Kippur says the 12.
Yeah, but it's.
Not the 21st.
I was, I was thinking.
The calendar is going to be amended any minute.
We will fix that.
Cause it, it is a school day for K through eight, right?
So we're going to make a motion, none of us is going to make a motion to amend the calendar for consistent days? So that would be caught.
Oh, okay, so we're, I see. I didn't know if we were going to make a motion to just, okay.
An advisement to.
Yeah, so I'd like to get a motion to charge the staff with taking this model and making it work from, from, not Sunday, from September to May and taking these four, end of May, and taking these four days that were distributed throughout the calendar, moving the four full days on Tuesday and Wednesday for high school. Get a motion to move those days to the end of the year and then have early release late start from September to May so we can have consistency. And central staff will produce that calendar in the next few weeks. But we are going with a weekly early release late start model. Then we want to reword that wordy motion or?
I'll make the motion to have the administration. Just before you make the motion, so we don't have to go through it again. So make sure I understand what the motion is going to instruct.
We're actually amending the motion.
Well, it's got to go there too, so we have a motion on the table we need to amend.
Yep.
Right, okay. Once it's amended, are we asking them to, is this, is this an, are we asking them to adopt the, are we adopting the calendar with this motion? Or are we telling the leadership team to go make a calendar that we're now going to have to adopt in a future meeting? Cause I'm worried about timing.
Yeah, we need to adopt this calendar now.
You are going to vote on the motion here and then you are going to make the amended motion at your local meetings.
Well, yeah, we're going to amend this motion and make the same motion in the local meeting.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's what we're going to do.
Right, so at the end of the night, we'll know where everybody stands.
Okay.
So that's a good charge to.
So you want to try and make that motion? Someone needs.
The original motion maker and the secondary to accept it as a friendly amendment and we're, we're good.
I know I seconded, who, who moved?
Mark.
Oh, it's not Paul, please?
There you go.
So I, do I withdraw and make a new one? I accept the friendly amendment and therefore the original motion is now as amended.
And that's, and as the original second, they're all second that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Move to 8.0, the consent agenda. I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second? Okay, Paulie seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Confirm next meeting dates, we have a regular meeting date which was coming, which will come up more quickly because it will be on the third week, May 17th. And board retreats on the 26th of May. So Keith can get his tea time at four o'clock on the 26th.
And just, just to say, that's going to be on the board chair agenda, the board retreats. I've received a note from a board member saying, really, do we want to spend so much energy on the retreats given that we're going to be taking a vote a week later that might, you know, mean that we are a merged board and what would that look like? And I responded that we'd had that conversation. I mean, I certainly, I saw that and wondered if we wanted to change things. So I think we'll have further conversation about that. We'll keep you all in the loop and for discussion again in May. Okay, don't take it.
May is a week before.
Don't take it off your.
Nine days before the retreats.
Yeah, don't, don't take it off your calendar, but we'll, we'll let you know as soon as we have a sense.
Is that something this board has to vote on to when a retreat happens? If you just can't be scheduled?
Yes, yep.
Okay. And June 21st business member meeting. And then also, all boards should schedule a June 6th forum in your town for Act 46, which would be the night before, similar to the meeting that we have.
Like the annual meeting.
The annual meeting that you would have the night before town meeting before you do the Australian ballot.
Can I say something about that? So we haven't had this conversation, it's just a thought I just had. I know that in Heinsburg, our select board meetings are first and third Mondays. And I don't know what other select boards are. And I'm concerned that there's a conflict there or that we at least ensure that we meet early enough so that it doesn't interfere with your local governance.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't think of that. Yeah, I mean, I didn't think of that because in Shelburne it's Tuesdays, and if there's, I think Bob requested it would be really nice if we all did it on the same night, but if Heinsberg needs to change, then that's-
I, I, I just thought of it.
Yep. So I'm just, this is no action, I'm just saying that this is something local boards would have to take up, so it's a good cue to, you guys should discuss that, but it's just another meeting that's up on the-
You probably ought to discuss that prior to Tuesday next week, because Tuesday next week you're passing the warning for that hearing.
Okay.
So tonight?
So tonight?
We're going to have a good discussion.
Well, we have a study committee meeting tomorrow. If we could have, make sure that we have this on our agenda, and then we'll charge our board chairs to schedule those forums. However that happens, if somebody, does that work?
Yeah, that's fine. All right, so with that, we'll go into our common topic, and Heather, I apologize for giving you less time, but appreciate you coming.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I wonder if you can give him on the page, it's okay.
Give an introduction for her.
Yeah, Cindy, Cindy, would you introduce her?
Before she starts, this is Heather Lynn. She's one of several attorneys we work with, but she is our chosen person on hazing, harassment, and bullying, and she spent a lot of time with many of your staff, particularly this year. We're very happy to have her.
Is she going to do a special session?
Sure, thank you. I think we're trying to get the screen up. And she also is a Shelburne resident and a parent of students, and I went to Shelburne School as well. So while we're trying to get this up, just a little background, I'm still living in Shelburne, and I work in Burlington at Lindman-Lachman and Nick's Key, and I've been working with school systems for about 15 years. And so the topic that Cindy asked me to come and share with you about is something I've been working on over the course of those 15 years. And I thought it'd be helpful to give you a sense of my perspective that comes up, particularly with respect to what we've done in those last 15 years and how that impacts the way schools are operating today. And in my opinion, the impact is quite dramatic. Without getting too legally, I could go on and on and on. In fact, tomorrow I will go on and on for about five hours with school administration regarding this very topic and the training that's in providing in the center of the state. So if I search for you, please raise your hand. But between 2000 and today, what we saw was a real change in our understanding of what the obligation of schools has with respect to the behaviors of students using each other. And between 2000 and 2005, we had a smattering of lawsuits all over the state, which I was lucky enough to be involved in. And they were following up on the statutes that had been put on the books, basically saying in aspirational terms, there shall be no harassment in Vermont schools. And to the extent that's occurring, schools need to have policies in place to address them. But what was so interesting about the lawsuits was that the suits of being brought in a manner against the schools, not against the students themselves. And what was happening in this lawsuit was an exploration of when is the school system going to be held responsible for the behavior of students. This might not seem so elementary, but really truly was, because up until that point, our understanding of application of anti-discrimination law, anti-harassment law, had really been in the employment context. And so up till that point, what we had said is employers, through their employees, cannot act in a discriminatory way, cannot allow harassing behaviors to go on, cannot allow hostile environments to be created. And the hook there was pretty direct. You hire and fire and you train your employees. When we took that and tried to make the analogous application to school systems, well, certainly we all understood that teachers can't behave in a harassing way towards students. That was not a leap. But what we're looking at with student-to-student behavior is quite different. And in those cases, what was being asked of the courts was, when is it the school's responsibility? When will the school be held to account when a student behaves in a harassing way towards another student? And so in these lawsuits between 2000 and 2005, we were running around the state, literally, asking different superior court judges, what did they think? When was that conduct going to be held, the responsibility legally of the school system? And the message that we got by and large through those decisions was, well, when the school knew about the behavior. It is that moment of notice when the school has knowledge of what's going on between the students and then proceeds to perhaps not do anything about the behavior, to stand by and allow it to continue, and the behaviors get to such a level as to be impacting the targeted student's ability to access their education, that that is essentially the educational institution's act of discrimination against the targeted student. And so in 2005, we actually had an appeal to the Supreme Court in the Washington case at the same time that the legislature was grappling with this very issue. And both court and the legislature came up with a decision, actual notice is going to be the trigger. Now, that seems fine, and it seems to settle the matter and make it quite clear, and it's reasonable and appropriate. But what that means is that with notice comes responsibility, with notice comes, the next question is, what did the school do with what it knew? And so from 2005 up through May of last year, we've seen a steady evolution of what would be the reasonable response for a school with information that indicates students are engaging in a way that violates their harassment policy. Through this same time period, of course, we added bullying and that concept to the books. And so when inter-student behaviors might involve bullying, we had similar obligations created. So between 2005 and 2015, because of the way the law is written, AOE has the primary responsibility of saying, so what is the policy on harassment and bullying? They set that forth. And what are the procedures which set out what will happen once a school has noticed that it's occurring? What does a school have to do to be deemed to be reasonably responding to that notice? That 10-year evolution took a lot of twists and turns, and what we saw in the last three years was one policy which defines all the different kinds of prohibited behaviors, not a separate bullying policy, not a separate harassment policy. That's very helpful and good. We have one uniform HHB policy, hazing, harassment, bullying. And then one procedure for defining when the school has noticed and what it does after that. And I want to be clear that that one procedure was really helpful because we used to have different procedures for different kinds of behaviors, and that was really confusing for the school.
Just one quick question.
Please.
I was trying to read it while you had the slide up.
Sure.
But as an engineer in the crowd, I can't quite tell the difference between reasonable notice and reasonable action.
Yep.
So could you just describe that quickly?
Once we're on notice and have the, the trigger is now on, what are we going to do about it? The question is going to be, what is our reasonable response? We're required to act in a reasonable way to take prompt and effective steps to prevent a recurrence and address and remediate any impacts on the targeted student. Those are now all enumerated in these very detailed procedures, and the procedures were recently updated in May. And the procedures that have been announced are now the subject of all of the training sessions that I've been spending so much quality time with staff and administrators, so that they have a thorough understanding A to Z of what's involved. And I created over the summer four different toolkits. There's one even for a board, and I think I distributed that to you in case you wanted to share it with the board at some point. But there's one for superintendents, for boards, for administrators, and for folks who are actually doing the investigations in these cases. But I want to be really, really explicitly clear with you about what's going on in your schools now as a result of these procedures. Once we have notice, and that is to say, once a teacher or any other employee of the school has seen or overheard the conduct or has heard through a report to them that conduct may have occurred that might violate the policy, these are all of the steps, and it's all in fine print, and I'm sorry that you can't read it, but I've tried to summarize it as best I can, and I've got at least 10 explicit steps here. In addition, at the end of that process, the person in charge of the response needs to come up with a written report. That process is only allowed to take five business days. This report has to repeat verbatim the initial report which caused us to be on notice, the policy definitions that are being applied, listing every interview of students and staff and/or parents that was undertaken in order to understand what was going on with a student, cataloging all documentary evidence that was reviewed. We need to see whether or not there has been an impact on the targeted student, whether it be academically, accessing education, attendance records, grades, discipline reports for prior instances, a listing of all the facts they find to be more likely than not to be true and proven as a result of the investigation, a list of all of the policy conclusions that they have reached, and their recommendations on how to remediate as required under the procedures, which would include, how are we going to prevent it from happening again, how are we going to address impacts on the targeted student, et cetera, et cetera. This can be quite a lot of work. I call it a drop everything task, but of course, your administrators and staff don't have that luxury. If you have more than one of these, you hope that you have another trained staff member available to take it on, because doing this within five business days for two cases is difficult. And if you are in any way tempted not to do this, you'll quickly have the opportunity where you have to explain yourself, because there are multiple levels of review available for both the targeted student and/or the student who is answering for their conduct. The targeted student can ask for an internal review in both hazing, or in both bullying, harassment cases. In harassment cases, they can ask for an independent review. I'm currently working on two independent reviews for school systems right now, and the documents that I'm collecting number in the hundreds of pages. And in turning that over, the first thing the independent reviewer asks is, please give me this report. And I want every document that it refers to, including the hand notes that were taken in the interviews. So it's a sort of, you pay now or you pay later. The investigator or the administrator who is responsible for doing this does not want to be in a situation where they don't have that documentation ready. So again, your SU is way ahead of this. We've done multiple trainings for staff and for administrators, so that not only the staff who are tasked with doing this work have a full understanding of what they need to do, but the administrators they're working with understand that when they get one of these put on their desk, this really does require top priority. Now, we have a clear understanding at this point of what is required under the procedures. That being said, to properly implement does require a lot of training. I've done probably 40 or 50 training sessions around the state, three to four hours at a time. Continue to do that. We'll be probably doing that again and again and again throughout all of next year, and there will be tweaks and updates. That means resource and time for your administrators to take away and attend those trainings. In addition, resources within the building are being absorbed to address these issues. And again, failure to address them can quickly draw a challenge through multiple levels of review. I didn't even mention that in harassment cases, the Human Rights Commission can be asked by a parent to come in and review what the school did, and that just means yet more time. But at the same time, this is all happening at a time when we're seeing an increase in schools of what I would call troubling, adverse behaviors generally. And the very resources that we're asking or pulling into the HHB investigation and response are the very resources we need still in school, available at a moment's notice to deal with troubling behaviors. So they're being pulled in both directions. So we have seen some improvements, but I would have to say, and this is still a draft, so the Vermont Department of Health hasn't released this, but I took a quick look at the statistics that they're releasing or prepared to release through the most recent youth risk behavior survey. And again, I want to be very clear that the definition of bullying is not given the same level of intensity. When our administrators look at a case of alleged bullying, they have a particular definition, and there needs to be particular impacts met. But when students are asked if they've been bullied ever on school property, at least half of them will say yes. 26% say they've been electronically bullied, and if they've been bullied in the last 30 days for middle school students, it's 24% down from 27%. That's still a quarter of students saying it's occurred to them in the last 30 days. In their view, that's what their experience has been. And at the high school level, when asked if they've been electronically bullied in the last year, 12% say yes. Have they been bullied in the last 30 days? 18% said yes. And of those bullied, the number of days they were bullied, 50% of middle school students and high school students said between one to two times. This jumps up to 21 to 30% of middle school and high school students saying more than six times. So to my view, with these kinds of reports still being issued despite all of the work that's been done, I don't see there being a point where the attention being brought to bear on these issues is going to go away anytime soon. You had a question?
Yeah, I was just curious.
Or a comment?
No, it was a question, is there any legal standard or threshold for the appropriate amount of oversight? In other words, if an incident is happening on the school grounds, is it enough for the school to say, well, I didn't notice it, so I'm not liable? Or is there some threshold beyond which, or some point where they should have noticed it?
So all that I've been describing are the new laws that have been put in place to deal with once we have clear notice. But your question is a broader one, which is, to what extent are we required to prevent it from happening in the first place? Or when it happens, are we responsible for it in that moment? And we, these laws don't overturn the general supervision statute that exists, which is in 16 DSA, I think at like 8:30 something. But what it basically says is, there isn't a requirement for us to have supervision of all students at all places at all times, but based on what we know about the foreseeability of potential bad conduct, we have to take what we know into account. So the example I always give when I do my trainings for administrators is, if Johnny's known to be a biter, and during lunchtime, you have that knowledge in advance, leaving Johnny to his complete own devices and not having any eyes on, that is not reasonable supervision. For Joey, who's never, ever engaged in bad conduct and does the one-off, loses his cool and shoves somebody, that is not on us. There was no prior notice. So it's what you know about the particular kid and their propensity. So backing up, the information that we're collecting through these investigations on bullying and harassment about students and their behavior and the detail we're going into, certainly an argument can be made, that is increasing our knowledge and increasing our duties under the supervision statute. I don't know if I answered your question, but I tried.
Yeah, no, thanks. Just a question of, you know, sure, actually there isn't, are you supposed to have mechanisms that would allow you to notice it? I'm thinking of, even in the context of some of the high-profile sport hazing type situations?
Yes, and, and that, that's an issue that's coming up. I don't know if it's more frequently or we've, we've had a couple of high-profile cases, and I've had involvement in both of those. And one of the questions that comes out is, what are we doing, for example, vis a vis the sports teams captains? Like, where are they in the chain of command? It's very clear that when the school has knowledge of an incident, we need to intervene and take action. And I'm not making a comment on any of these prior cases, just looking generally in terms of global lessons. But when we do have team captains, are students being given unwittingly the impression that where they have a problem with another student that may or may not rise to level of harassment, hazing, or bullying, are they being encouraged to go to the team captain first as opposed to? And so you can see how the impacts of these laws and requirements in this new rubric have, you know, a variety of ripple effects. And we constantly, I've been doing this for 15 years, and every day I learn something new. If this is what I focus on all the time, what can I hope for for my administrator clients who are dealing with this as one of only millions of other obligations and requirements? They're certainly not expected to be legal experts. We saw an attempt, and I don't know where it's going to end up, but currently pending in the legislature is an effort to expand, for example, the definition of prohibited conduct under the bullying definition, to apply to the behavior of staff, administrators, and teachers. What I mean by that is, bullying right now relates to the behavior between students. If passed, the amendment would change that so that it would cover the conduct of any employee of the school to a student. employee of the school to a student, and allow a complaint to be brought forth alleging a student has been bullied by a teacher, a student has been bullied by a staff member. I testified at the legislature last week, strongly urging that they not go in that direction for two reasons. The first is, the conduct of licensed professionals is already subject to oversight and scrutiny by AOE. To the extent that physical restraint might be involved, we have very clear obligations under Rule four thousand five hundred. And if any child is suspected to be a victim of abuse, we're all mandated reporters. But if we're going to add the conduct of teachers and staff and administrators to the area of scrutiny and follow-up and investigation under these policies, we will already dilute a finite resource available where we've been trying to focus for fifteen years on how do we get a handle on student-to-student behaviors. And my, my point was, that would be a diversion and a detour that is not necessary, as the legislature has made it such a priority to deal with and get schools to address student-to-student behaviors. I think there was some resonance to that. They seemed very open to hearing from me, and I found that to be encouraging. But that being said, the bullying cases that I see around the case of the state increasingly get to a place quite quickly where parents are taking their child out of school and asking that they be tuitioned elsewhere. So you, as a board, may soon have a request from a parent, and I've had them in other SUs, where they're asking for the board to exercise its discretion to provide for tuitioning. And of course, you always have the discretion, if two boards agree to terms, you can do that. And in the high school context, if the board determines that the school district can't serve a student's unique educational needs, you can agree to make that tuition request and have it be granted. But at this point in time, those decisions are final, and there is no appeal from that. One of the pieces of the proposed legislation would allow for students to not only ask for an independent review in cases of bullying, which doesn't currently exist, it only exists for harassment cases, but it allowed an independent reviewer, if passed, to make a decision to tuition that student to the school of the parent's choice, in or out of state. That was an incredible leap. And so one of the questions that I received from legislators when I was talking to the House Ed Committee last week was, you know, we have a lot of heartrending stories that come before us on bullying, and parents saying, you know, there's no place to turn, and what if my board says no? I stated first and foremost, I believe that the internal process of chain of command, going to the superintendent and then going to the board is my preferred route, not adding an independent review for bullying. But when asked, would it be appropriate to provide yet one more level of review for board decisions to the AOE? I said, frankly, because I believed that at some point there needs to be some additional review offered because of the pressure that receiving, that it didn't seem to be inappropriate to have AOE have an appeal opportunity for these board decisions. It would allow some level of uniformity in decisions around the state, some level of guidance, and certainly, AOE provides a level of review for decisions taken by boards with respect to residency decisions. So there is a sense of analogy there, and hopefully those would be done in a speedy way and in front of their legal counsel, which is the way I've seen the residency appeals occur. So there is continuing interest and activity in these areas. Again, I am stressing with my clients that we want to make sure that we're in full compliance with the procedures, and at the same time, to the extent possible, it would be great if we had a lot of support and guidance from the state level as to how do we create the schools in which these behaviors are the exception rather than the rule? Because of course, if you really want to save time on these investigations, not having to do them in the first place is the best way to save that time. But at all of my trainings, the questions are, so what is the guidance? How do we do this? How do we achieve this? And it's not forthcoming. So I always challenge back to my educator clients, we're the experts on how to explain these complex concepts to students, you know, create study groups, go out and look at what's being done across the country, see what works, tweak, work, invent, but understand, as I said to the legislature, you know, it is one thing to say that we can come up with a great program, but you need to really, really understand, unlike even in a company, where maybe you try to change culture over time, in any school system, the best culture you create has to be recreated every nine months. Every year, we have turnover with staff, and every year, we get a new class. Every class has its own feel to it, its own vibe, and you have new students coming into your district from different places, with different understandings of expectations around behaviors. So we have to build that city on the hill every year. So it's a lot on educators' plates, and I welcome the opportunity to try to explain what was going on. I don't know if there are particular issues that you want, there are a lot of different slides that I could go through, but I'm mindful that your time is precious. Is there anything in particular that you want me to hit on that?
Well, see, if they have questions, then I might remind them of questions like that.
Questions they really have.
Do you think the new rules that went into place in the last year, where the investigations have become much more documented, the five days type of thing, how does that, how does that change the system? Like, what does that paperwork and that investigation do to the system? You know, say, for, poor example, but like, how does that change a child's behavior, possibly? If you can answer that.
Yeah, how does that achieve change in terms of culture ultimately, these detailed? And I'm going to sort of split my answer in two ways. On the one hand, I will tell you, as someone who's had a large degree of influence and the ability to rewrite and have input into the two thousand fifteen and the two thousand and twelve updates, I can tell you substantively speaking, there is not much that was new, added in. All we did was, we made it uniform between both harassment and bullying, so there was one process, while we also made it really explicitly clear that notice will occur not just when a designee, who is someone who has the responsibility for fielding these kinds of complaints if it's brought to them, but when anybody in the organization gets information about it. That change, the one that I just mentioned, has really increased the amount of referrals that are coming in because that's flushed out more of the information that others in the institution had, as opposed to when people came forward to the designee and said, hey, I think we have an HHB issue that needs following up on. So that latter change has increased the volume of the issues that are being processed through this. And while reports were my recommendation for, so that, that list of all the things you have to come up with, this documentation, explicitly in two thousand fifteen, it was, you need to do a report. Now, these areas that I detail here, those are my recommendations. When you go to the procedures, it says, you need to make sure you cover these topics. This is my way of explaining to schools, this is how you do it, in a real, practical sense. The other change that I think has occurred that has increased the burden from these reports is the new appeal to boards. Before two thousand fifteen, there were appeals available to victims, as I will call them, targets of the behavior through various guises. But for a student who is found to violate hazing, harassment, and bullying procedures for the very first time in the two thousand fifteen change, it is now announced, if you are found to violate the policy at any level of discipline, including no discipline, just you violated it, don't do it again. A student may appeal that decision to the school board. Those school boards are going to make a decision based on the record. The record is the documentation created. So again, that's pulling and demanding at the investigation level that these reports be ready to go because if an appeal is requested, it has to happen immediately, and you have to be in a position to turn that information over to the board. So what is this doing in terms of what's going on in the classroom? The impact that I'm seeing is just a resource one. The people who would be available to be pulled into a classroom because maybe there's some escalating behavior, or available to put onto the playground or into areas of what we call normally less supervision, less monitored time, less face-to-face time with students. Those bodies are being absorbed by these responsibilities. They're doing an investigation. So the scenario I see is, you know, behaviorist in a school system who's doing an investigation on this, is sitting in one-to-one interviews and documenting and taking next steps, and classroom teacher says, I've got Joey escalating, can you get the behaviorist in here? And the behaviorist says, I can't, I got a five-day timeline, and I'm at day four, and this kid is available today, I don't know if they're going to be out with the sniffles tomorrow. So those are the impacts that I'm seeing. Do I see it ultimately changing the environment? In the most optimistic sense, I think that it has heightened the sensitivity and awareness within schools to the extent that these behaviors get to a point, as we're required to analyze them, that they're affecting another student's ability to come to school. That's a new element of how we're looking at things. Previously, I think a lot of the discipline issues, we were looking at vis-à-vis just the offender student, and how their own behavior is getting in the way of them accessing schools. This compels us to add in a new analysis, which is, to what extent are those behaviors affecting other students? So it's a long-winded answer, I'm sorry.
No, you touched on something that I think is very important, and that is that behavior interventionists are being pulled out of that job to do another job, which they then produce all this documentation, which then needs to be redacted for certain uses to certain parents, and sent out to certain kids. And I, I just, you know, I think there's, there's so many impacts to this. Not that the legislation is a bad idea, that's not what I'm saying, but I'm seeing like, the way this spreads through the whole school system's resource allocation is like a bucket of water on the floor, it just spreads out quickly all over.
If you're going to do it right, you have to commit a lot of time to doing it right.
Yeah.
And it reminds me of a case I had in front of the Human Rights Commission, which investigates whether or not schools are doing this right with respect to harassment. And I had a particularly thorny case, and I had consulted as it was going on, and then I represented them through the investigation. At the end of the investigation, the investigator said to the principal, I just want to commend you on your fabulous documentation. And the principal said, well, I thank you very much, she was with me, in fact, she practically had a side office next to me. It wouldn't be that good if I hadn't been in constant contact with counsel. So if you're going to hold up our case as a model to schools, I hope you also attach to it a legal supplement for services. You know, that was, you know, she wanted to do it right, she cared deeply and was willing to do everything that was asked of her, but she said, I would have needed a legal degree to wind my way through it all. So it is, it is a lot.
Yeah.
It is a lot. There are thorny issues, and there's no simple answer. This is the solution we've come up with. And, you know, I always encourage my clients not to fight it, but to get your harms around it and deal with it, and do the best you can by it.
So do you see that preliminary training and setting a culture in an institution helps eliminate, or at least lessen, the possibility of a lawsuit? Or, or just the behavior? I'm not even thinking of how horrendous the lawsuit is, but, but culture of here won't allow that to happen. Everybody's on board with the checks and balances, and training for students and faculty and staff.
We're required under these procedures to provide training to students, and I'm urging schools, and I don't think that I'm the only one coming up with this, I think they understand this themselves, that as hard as it may be for us to hear a presentation like this with a dry definition, if you're going to talk to students, you need to make it real, you need to give them living examples of what we mean. What does this feel like? What does it look like? The more you do that, the more you distinguish for them petty indignities to truly harassing bullying behavior that get in the way of another student's ability to come to school. I think that has a dramatic impact. At the same time, I will tell you that in some of the schools, when I was doing these presentations, they would say to me, if I do what you're telling me, if we all report, all of us here, we'll be doing investigations all the time. And I say, you may be initially, but that has its benefit, back to your question, are there some positives in and of itself? Because what will happen is, the message will quickly get out for the students, that just as we teach kids when they walk into a darkened theater or a library, they are to lower their voice, that when they walk into a Vermont school system, if you engage in name-calling and rude and derisive banter, this is what happens every single time. And so what I say is, you know, for the first month, we will all be chasing our tails. But by the end of September, that will have weeded itself out, people will self-correct, and then you'll be left perhaps with students who truly are not understanding what we're trying to achieve, and we focus our efforts in education with them. That's again, the best, sort of best analysis that I, the most positive approach that I can see. But yeah, the more we can get out in front of it and explain to students that this is a part of being in a multicultural, tolerant society, and it's not just the school that's demanding it, it's when you go out into a job or any of those other contexts. You know, we are doing them no favors by holding back on explaining these expectations. But it would be my preference that we would have the luxury of the resource and time to do that preventative stuff, so that again, this kind of stuff is the exception rather than the norm.
Cyberbullying and the rise of social media, how has that changed the responsibility of the school? And at what, I mean, does it have to take place on campus or on the bus, or can it be anywhere?
It, it does not have to happen on school grounds. Now, if you looked at the harassment definition, you would see how we have changed the definition so that it can capture those behaviors. I'm going to use by way of an example because I have it quickly available, the bullying definition. So bullying is an overt act or combination of acts, including an act conducted by electronic means, there you go. We talked about cyberbullying at the legislative level several years ago. I wasn't a part of those discussions, but my, my sense is, they've decided to simply insert that to make it quite clear. And then it goes on to read, directed against a student by another student or group of students, and again, what's on the table is to include maybe when it's directed by teachers or staff. But currently, it's student-to-student, and it's repeated over time and has an intent to ridicule, humiliate, or intimidate. So there is an intent component. So when we do our investigations, we've got to get at what was being intended by the bullier. And it either occurs during the school day, on school property, on a school bus, or at school-sponsored activity, or before, after the school day, or it doesn't. So what they did is, they said, or it doesn't. So when they added the electronic means, they said, it might not occur, but then they added this important piece. But even though it does not occur during the school day, on a school property, or a school bus, or at a school-sponsored activity, it can be shown to pose a clear and substantial interference within another student's right to access educational programs. So it happens elsewhere, but what happens in Vegas does not stay in Vegas if it's making it hard for a targeted student to come to school. So what's the impact? Huge, huge. And a piece of prevention is having the community understand what you do on Facebook Saturday night between you and another student is our business. We are compelled to look into it if it comes to our attention. Take it one step further, smartphones and the ability to record and retransmit photographic material of a sensitive nature, those are not even, in my view, truly captured in the definition of harassment, yet, under these policies. I can work with administrators to get to a place where we can fit the definition to address that, but I see that as sort of the next wave of revisions that are necessary at the AOE level. Just did four hours of training at Norwich University this morning on Title IX. They've got explicit definitions in their policy on sexual exploitation, vis-à-vis the use of photographic material and retransmitting and all of that. So that is the next wave. So there's just more. Yes.
So just sort of electronic bullying and the intersection with sort of the school's obligation to report or to notice. For schools that are providing here the laptops, I know in other states, there are districts that surveil communications that take place on the laptops. You know, where does that fall in Vermont, that balance between privacy and providing a safe platform? platform?
It's really gonna come down to your policies and your technology use policy, and making really clear to students, when you're giving them the technology, what are proper uses and what are prohibited uses, and whether or not you're reserving the right to view that at any time. In the absence of that, you know, search and seizure law applies, and essentially, for a school, if you have reasonable suspicion, because you stand in loco parentis, you have a right to view something if you believe looking at it would reveal a violation of your policy, i.e. cyberbullying behaviors, or law. But it is the safer course to have an explicit policy that lays that out, because, of course, any administrator that calls me up, they're gonna say, "I have my policy in front of me, and it says this, so does that mean I can do X?" So when you're handing out that technology, I would want that to come with a user's manual and explanation of, "This is not for private use." And if it's used in a way to violate our policies, we reserve the right to look at it on demand.
Amanda, I have one more question.
Yeah.
But, you know, we're ten on five, but if somebody has a very, very pressing question, we could hit one more, but I think Amanda will be the last.
Excuse my pardon, I have a question about the students. Do they have to be at the same school, the kids bullying and accused of it? Or can they be at two schools, perhaps in the same district? So if we were to transfer one to another school within the district, or the supervisory union or whatnot, how does that play into things? Like, because if you have the ability to do it electronically, one student could still be bullying another student even if they're not at the same school.
So the jurisdiction of a school to discipline and/or investigate behaviors by students who are not actually in their school system, but they're at a neighboring school or within the SU, but not, yeah?
Right, within the SU.
There is the ability for the administrator to share that information with the other administrator, but the definitions are not so specific as to, are we talking about when we say "student"? It doesn't then go on to say "student of that building proper." So it is an open question. And so what I generally say is, you should, you know, not get hung up on, "Can I discipline that other kid because they're not in my building?", as opposed to everything else that this law compels us to do, which is to look into what's going on with the targeted student. Are they having trouble coming to school? Is there a safety plan we can put in place? Are there supports we can put in place? Do all of those things, and you've met your, your obligation. So I wouldn't first and foremost want a student not to come forward because they're saying, "Well, it's not a student here." We still want to know about it, because we still want to support that student.
Well, that was great.
Well, thank you for your questions.
All right, so we're gonna switch over to the petition and school board presentation. Do we, I was just pausing there, do we need to do anything else? No, we don't. Okay.
I'm a CSSU Board Chair, Children's Chair, also a member of the Act 46 Study Committee. And during this process, we had a few things come up, and it just felt like I really wanted to lay out the process of how to become a board member for the new merged district based on our timeline, and the way the process moves in conjunction with all the votes about the actual merger. So what we're gonna talk about quickly here is, what is the current system for school boards? What the new system is proposed for, you know, for our district through the Act 46 Study Committee? What the new school board, who the, what the new school board members would look like, where they would come from, and what the timing is. So as we all know, we currently have five separate towns, CDU District, as well as the CSSU, so we have seven school boards with 34 members, 17 of whom sit around this table, and the others are, all of us are elect by our individual towns. From the supervisory union, the 17-member board oversees shared services throughout the SU, and oversees six school buildings, 4,000 students, 900 employees, and the number we heard just a few hours ago, $70 million budget. So what our proposed governance is, is taking those five towns and five school districts plus CDU, and merging these five districts plus the potential for St. George to go either way. We use these terms necessary, where these five towns are critical to having a merged district. St. George could say no, and we would still move forward, a little bit of gray area, but not, not that we need to talk about that right now. The new district would operate K to 12, and we would have one single board for what is now five K to eight schools and one high school. This would all be combined into one budget, adjusted for local property values, and all property would also transfer to this new district. So what would the board composition look like for the new Champlain Valley School District? We would have a 12-member board elected based on population of the 2010 census. And that roughly comes out with Charlotte and Heinsburg with two, St. George with one member, Shelburne with three, and Williston with four. If Sha, if St. George does not vote to join, we would have an 11-member board with the same distribution, just remove the St. George member. These 12 members would oversee, basically, the, the policy and implementation for what is now the previous six buildings that we talked about. What happens to the existing school boards? So if the Act 46 merger is approved, the new school, school board members would form the new school board shortly after June 7th in a meeting with the Secretary of Education. The new board, roughly after July 1st, 2016, would begin the establishment of policy and procedures to create the new district. The new district would be planned to be fully operational and overseeing the five different schools plus CDU on July 1st, 2017. The new board would create the budget for fiscal year 1718, which would mean that this coming fall and this following March, the new board of the 12 people would be creating a budget of 70 million for vote in March of 2017. The existing 34, not member boards, but members of boards, they would gradually tail off responsibility, starting at, with July 1st of this year. You would not, the existing board members, myself as a current Shelburne Town Board Member, I would not be involved as directly in the preparation of budgets throughout next fall and through next winter for next year's fiscal, for next year's budget. So what happens is, the election of school board members to the new boards is concurrent with the vote to approve, or hopefully not disapprove, the Act 46 merger. So when you go to vote on June 7th, you'll have a ballot that has yes or no on Act 46 consolidation in your town, and then you'll have a slate of school board members that you will vote upon to vote, to be part of this new school board. So each town will elect one to four members based on the proposed structure. Each member desiring to be on the ballot will have to go to their town clerk and get the petition, I think you still have to sign the consent form, is that correct? Is that right?
You need thirty signatures on that.
And, get into that, you're stealing my, get into that, okay? Then you need to get the 30 signatures, and my personal recommendation is, always get some extras. I'm always amazed how many people think they're registered to vote and actually don't vote and don't know that they're not registered to vote. So that has happened. This petition must be turned in to your town clerk by Friday, May 6th. That is one week from this Friday. So I trust that our town clerks have these already. Is that right, Bob? Bob nodding yes.
I'll tell you what, I have my.
Well, you already went. That's awesome.
You can get them off the Secretary of State website.
Oh, you can?
Are the petitions that the town clerks are putting together have specific language that say Chief of Valleys?
Yeah.
Plus the term we're gonna use.
So one of the questions that comes up are, what are the terms of these new positions as they are elected? So because we don't want to elect everybody and then reelect them three or four years later, we're having staggered terms, so broken down by town based on the number of seats you'll have, they will be, you'll be voting on two-year, three-year, and four-year terms. When each one of these terms expires, so after two years, this seat will turn into, you vote every three years. So once you go through this cycle of three, of this first year of elections, every following election will be for a three-year seat. But, for example, you know, this year, you'll vote, two Williston seats will be two-year, one three-year, and one four-year. So, a four-year seat, wow. That's, that's a commitment. You may stay on the board for an awful long time, but signing up for four years in a stretch is a good time.
But to be fair, it's not quite four. Three years and nine months.
Three, okay. That's right. Did the, did the lawyer just correct the engineer on some math? So I think that lays out the rough groundwork. Are there any questions about this process at all? Bob, Mason?
David, I'd like to just emphasize one point. When you, when you go in and get a petition from the town clerk, you're gonna fill out the top with your name. You also need to identify specifically which one of those seats you're running for in the communities that have multiple terms. So you'll appear on the ballot with the others who have voiced an interest in that particular term position.
Can we go back to that panel? And if we could just, for those who are not familiar, just clarify again what these terms mean. So it's election now, but the terms will expire at the annual meeting. Because of the work of a, of an initial board, there's, you know, policy, blah, 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 developing a new budget and so forth, the thought was that it would be too short of a time, you know, once an initial board got up and going, let's say, September, October, developing a new budget, to have them leave at the annual meeting would be too soon, which is why our legal counsel suggested going to the two, three, four-year term. So it's, it's gonna turn over at the annual meeting every year, but initially, it's the staggered terms.
And the annual meeting is in dispute to be town meeting, David?
An annual meeting is town meeting.
Right, so someone would get elected on June 7th, 2016, they'd go through to the, you know, they would pass through the first town meeting in March of 17, and they would be reelected, oh, their, their term would end at March 18.
March 2018.
Right.
Yeah. And the, the current boards, everyone, all 34 board members continue to be the 34 board members of the individual districts until July 1, 2017, unless your term expires March of 2017. And we won't talk about that now because it's not important. It gets confusing.
Right. But what is, but what I think is, is super important here is to remember that there is no longer going to be a CDU board. There's no longer gonna be a Shelburne board. There's gonna be three members from Shelburne who represent the school district. And that's replacing three members from Shelburne on CDU's board, and five members from Shelburne at the Shelburne board. Yes, Kathy?
But until July 2017, there will still be five members on the Shelburne board.
There will be still five members on the Shelburne board. The responsibility will be gradually tailing off, because you won't be preparing a budget next winter that will be done by the new board.
And the responsibility of those people stays, exactly what it is now, to that particular board district they're on.
You have, we, as a Heinsburg board member, unless I'm on that board, I have no responsibility to the new school district.
Understood.
Amanda had one quick question.
This is a, this is a.
Follow?
Part of that.
Okay.
So somebody is on the Shelburne board currently, and they go on to the new board, right? So they're on both boards. What is the expected time commitment for somebody in that position?
So we had conversations about that, and the, the expected, the expectation we got out of.
A lot.
Yeah. It is a lot. So you're basically, you're basically joining a third, if you're a, you're joining a second or a third board. If you're on the CSSU board as well, you're joining a third board.
Besides the committees that you might be on.
Right, right. But, but also, there is some talk about having that third option fall on another night, which is another thing that's up for discussion. Colleen's gonna correct me here.
Well, you know, I just, you know, as you were just starting to say, you know, we've talked about what are the possibilities for structure. So, for example, currently, we have our carousel meeting with our local boards and the SU board. That will stay for another year if towns approve a merger. With a newly consolidated board, 12 members, it's likely that there'll be some people who are on both, their local and newly consolidated board. Obviously, you can't have a third meeting in one night, that would just put some people under. So it would probably be somewhat similar to what we have been doing now for structure. Our study committees have been meeting on a regular basis on a night.
A different Tuesday. Yeah.
So it would likely be that you'd have some pattern similar to that. And just, you know, if I could add one other piece, a newly consolidated board, and this is premature, we're gonna talk about this tomorrow a little bit, and I shared a little bit with Elaine earlier, you know, we're talking about how do you, how do you maintain that local connection, the local voice piece? And one concept hasn't been talked about, you know, extensively at all, just a concept, a, for example, it could be that a newly consolidated board meets on one night, and prior to the full board meeting, there might be a local opportunity for, let's say, the two board members from Heinsburg to meet with their principals and, you know, public presentation, whatever it might be. So it might be a structure similar to what we're doing now, because I, you know, I think that there is concern about what is, what is the connection, and you still need that in some way. As a study committee, we haven't talked about that. It's on our agenda tomorrow night to do some brainstorming, but that's a, for example, it could be, I'm sure there are other ideas out there.
One, one quick one. We had a question from the other hand.
I have actually two questions, Dave. One is, you're saying that the current boards would be in office from June 2018? Is that correct? Or is it 2017?
Seventeen.
So is it possible that you've got somebody whose term is up in March of 2017? And what happens with that position for the three months?
We're waiting for the state to tell us.
Keith has a.
Well, under current law, you would have to run, someone has to run to be elected to that position, and if no one runs for that position, it's an open seat, and you need to put someone in that seat.
Okay. So you would still have five members up until, whether it be an election or an appointment?
You still have two of those more.
What? Did you have a, oh, that was two questions. Okay, Amanda had her hand up first.
So what if a position is unfilled? Does it fall under the same law? Does the new board pick somebody? And if so, does it have to? And if so, does it have to make the same distribution from the towns? So for instance, a four-year term, if nobody wants to do that, how do we fill it?
Um, is one of the lawyers here know the answer to that question?
Yes. Yes. You have the same, it would have to come from the town, and you would have the same sort of responsibilities.
Colleen?
So the CSSU board is still going to be in effect until June of 2017?
That's correct. The CSSU structure maintains until that day, you know, the, we don't officially hand over complete management of the system until July 1st of 18. Seventeen. Seventeen. I said seventeen. Bob?
Which board, the old board or the new board, creates the budget that's going to get voted on in March of 2017?
The new board.
The new board. So what's the old board going to be doing?
Less.
Yeah.
That's Colleen.
So I want to make sure that we ask questions over here, but so, for example, it would make a lot of sense, one of the pieces that we've talked about is having budget buddies going into a new system, you know, as an idea for keeping the local context. So it makes sense in some ways to have, this is just a thought, current board members serve as budget buddies for a newly consolidated board. I mean, that's an idea. But there are duties of the new board, the old boards that have to follow through until June 30th, end of business, 5 o'clock.
You still have the responsibility. Are there any other questions from the, from the crowd? No? Okay.
Can I, can I say something? So going back to the time commitment, I have two comments, one pragmatic and one philosophical, although Colleen might have just taken away my pragmatic one. As Dave mentioned before, the current boards are going to be ramping down. So the time commitment for what we're sitting around this table for right now is going to decrease significantly. I, for one, have been secretly celebrating for months that I'm done with budget process, that I've done my last budget. So, but Colleen now wants me to be a budget buddy, so we'll talk. The philosophical one is this, I really hope that this, with this great journey that we have now theoretically shoved off from shore on succeeds. And I really hope that someone who's thinking about being on that board doesn't, doesn't pursue it because of a time commitment issue. This is the culmination of years of effort to get this to be a consolidated and frankly commonsensical governance structure. And yes, it's a big time commitment for a year and nine months, but thereafter, I really don't think the time commitment's any different than any of us do now.
Here, here. School board recruitment speech by Keith. Yes, Elaine?
So I would just ask that when you take out your petitions, would you let me know that they're running? Because I've heard from others that they're curious about who's running. So what I promise, if you let me know, I will share with all board members, here's who's running. Here's who's taking out petitions.
If Keith's running, none of us are running. Yeah.
He's not running.
Well, it's, it's an open secret to most people. I am not running. I will not be on the new board. Not because of a time commitment, not because of a philosophical problem. I have a professional conflict.
Well, that's, that's why I asked the time commitment, because some of us may have those conflicts that we don't have a choice about.
And also, I mean, I, you know, also, you know, echo what Elaine said and talk to your fellow board members currently and figure out which of the 10 in your town may be, may be going down to four or to three, and have that conversation about folks who really want to be there can be there. So, yeah.
If I could just put one more plug in, I'm sorry.
No.
There's, for, for board members who choose not to run for a consolidated board, there's going to be no shortage of opportunities to participate in governance pieces because, for example, let's say there's a facilities project that's coming up, and that's something that someone might be passionate about who's currently not on a board or whatever. So there's going to be, be a need to go to community members to participate in different activities depending on what's going on in local communities. So just another piece to think about.
Great.
One more.
Yes, Colleen. Last question.
We, yes, we have a lot of committees now that many of us are involved in. There are 35 people to be involved in all of those committees at this time. You're going to go down to 12. Do you have any sense of committees? Is that going to be perhaps volunteers from the community, or what are you thinking about that?
So some, we've had some conversations about this, and again, we're going to, we're going to dig into this a little more tomorrow night, and you can watch it on Google Hangout or you can come and sit in the meeting. We meet in CSSU Office Conference Room. But for example, throughout the study committee work, we found that it was more efficient to delegate some of the work to subcommittees, and we had a governance subcommittee, a finance subcommittee, and a communications subcommittee because it was easier to work with four to six people on a, on a question and then have them bring it back to the full study committee. I found it very efficient and it allowed us to get a lot of work done. I think we're going to need some elements of that. So for example, a consolidated board, some of the responsibilities, and you can go right to the statute and read what the responsibilities are for boards, but it's, it's policy, which gets into, you know, some of the governance pieces, hiring a superintendent, so you've got that work, and budget, you know, finance, so maybe there's a finance subcommittee. Where we've heard that people want to be able to maintain some local input on an issue, I brought up the issue of facilities, and we talked through that a couple of times in the governance subcommittee work, is if there's a facilities project, it makes sense to draw people from the local community who have a particular interest in property or that school or whatever, and perhaps they inform focused, specific committee work that has a beginning, middle, and an end. It's finite. And in some ways, that's appealing to a lot of people because they, they don't have to commit to three years, nine months. They can commit to, oh, when this topic comes up in my community, perhaps there's an opportunity for me to focus on this particular project and bring my expertise to that. So it's, one of the things that the study committee did discuss is not binding the work of a consolidated board too early in the process. We didn't want to prescribe policy because it's up to a newly consolidated board to do that, but we also understand that there's a lot of curiosity and interest, well, how is this going to work? And so some of the things that I've said tonight, these are just some ideas, and there are a lot more ideas out there.
Great. That's great. All right. So thanks for that. Thanks for the questions. And I think with this, we'll adjourn the CSSU meeting for the night. Got a motion to adjourn? All right. Thank you.